The regular meeting of the Independent School District 279 School Board is called to order at 6:01 PM on December 18th, 2018. Seated in front of you this evening, from my left to your right, are Director Jackie Muscata-Jones, Director Dean Hanke, Director Jim Burgett, myself, Director Mike Ostafi, Director Heather Douglas, Director Jessica Craig, and Interim Superintendent Dr. James Bauch. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. And Director Burgett, would you like to lead us, please?
Sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
And we'll start with Agenda Item Number Two, which is Retiree Recognition, and I will ask Dr. Bauch to please lead this evening's retirees' recognition.
Thank you, Chair Ostafi. The district is implementing a new way to recognize retirees closer to their actual retirement dates instead of waiting for that grandiose end of the year event. So tonight, we're going to use the regular school board members to conduct the retiree recognition. This is our first opportunity night, so it's our trial run, too. Letters of invitation were sent to retirees, and many were not able to attend tonight. But before I ask the retirees to come forward and be recognized, I'd like to just share a few comments. As often is the case when we get to retirement and recognizing retirees, the number of years of service by the individuals retiring is significant. I think we have over 600-plus years of service for all those that are retiring, not just those in attendance tonight, but those unable to attend tonight, which is quite a significant number. However, I would submit, more important are the contributions you have made as retirees to the many generations of students that have, you've had an opportunity to work with or be a part of their education, no matter what your job or function. Retirees, when you decided to work in a school district, you chose a job of the heart, and we're glad that said job was in this district and not someplace else. And finally, I want to leave you with two quotes tonight. The first one is from Ben Franklin, who said, "Well done is better than well said." And the second is from Dr. Zeus. Don't cry because it's over; smile because it happened. On behalf of the district and the school board, well done, retirees; smile, and best wishes in your retirement. At this time, would board members go in front of the diocese? I will read the name of each retiree in attendance, and if you would please come forward at that time to shake hands with the school board members and receive your district retirement gift. First, Louise Hill, Special Ed ESP. Louise? Betty is a clerical ESP. Our last retiree this evening that was able to attend, Steve Erickson, who is Assistant Coordinator of Facilities and Operations. Steve? Again, retirees, well done; smile; enjoy your retirement, and best wishes. Thank you for being here this evening.
We're not going to make you sit through anymore.
At this time, we're also going to recognize retiring school board members, Jim Burgett and Dean Hanke, as tonight is their last official function for our school district. And I'd like to just make a few comments about boardmanship and about these two board members, and then I'll turn it over to Mike. The most visible work of a board involves developing a vision for the district, setting strategic course of action, deploying resources to accomplish goals, approving budgets, determining policy, providing facilities that are safe and healthy, assessing the results of the efforts of the district staff, and generally providing for the educational needs of the district's students. However, school board members engage in many other activities to support the district's work that are sometimes a little less visible to our community and our staff. Those activities include spending time in schools, building relationships with partner organizations, meeting with community members, attending school and district events, participating in training at local, state, and national levels, and diligently preparing for school board meetings. Most important, most important part about being a school board member, though, involves making difficult decisions. What I've learned about both of you is you're willing to ask tough questions, push the envelope, and make difficult decisions when needed. Being able to make difficult decisions while challenging is simply part of being a school board member. Often at the board level, you're faced with the decisions that I often call "right, right" decisions, where there is no one best answer. Regardless of the type of decisions you've been a part of, said actions were accomplished with a sense of caring, consistency with community values, and what was beneficial for students. Dean, I want to thank you for being willing to step in to fill out a vacant term. Your knowledge and previous history of district decisions has been very, very helpful, as you've fulfilled your duties for the past six months. I also want to congratulate you regarding your service as the district's representative to intermediate District 287 Board over the recent years, as you will also be stepping down from that assignment at the closure of this school, at the closure of December. So thank you, Dean, for your previous years of service and the most recent six months. Jim, a little more on you. You were elected first in 2010 and re-elected in 2014 and served as Director, Treasurer, and Vice Chair. And during your time on the board, you've been involved in the following, and there's many more beyond this, but I just took a quick little list. The successful 2013 operating levy, renewal and increase in the passage of our first tech levy, development and implementation of the district's first digital learning-for-all plan, implementation of the grade span change, which was historic in terms of the scope and complexity of the change in our district, development of long-range financial planning model and fiscal management practices that have created financial stability for our system, implementation of all-day kindergarten and expansion of the pre-kindergarten opportunities, approval of a 10-year, $235 million-long-term facilities maintenance plan, which will touch every site and protect our community's investment in its school building and assets, development and approval of the school board's racial equity and achievement, educational achievement policy. You helped launch the district-wide enrollment and capacity management advisory committee, now in its third year of work, to advise administration. And, which you will probably touch on tonight, I believe, the successful dissolution of the Ties Consortium and the sale of the Ties Building. I'd also submit that one of the reasons Jim has been such a valuable board member is that he has invested the time and energy to develop these central skills and expertise that support effective work of school boards. You've taken all four levels of training through the Minnesota School Board Association. You've attended several board leadership conferences and participated in a training regarding employee negotiation, contract negotiations. To both of you, thank you for executing the role of the school board member with grace, skill, perseverance, and the utmost civility. You have governed well. Thank you for serving, and best wishes as you move into another stage and journey of your life. With that, Mr. Chair, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you for those eloquent words, Dr. Bauch. And, gentlemen, thank you for the years of service. I know that when I was sitting on that side, you had to take many phone calls and emails from me. Now that I'm over here, I apologize. So, thank you. I now, I now sit in your shoes, and they're big shoes to fill, and again, thank you for all your help and service over the last many years. So, thank you. Let's move on to the third agenda item, and that's addition changes to the agenda. In front of you, board members, is the agenda, and I do move to amend the agenda to remove Action Items 11D to 11E, which are second readings of Policies 613, 652, and 654, and that consideration of the proposed amendments to these policies be taken up at the next regular board meeting on January 15th, 2019, in order to permit sufficient passage of time between the first reading of these policies and board action. Our normal board meetings are four weeks apart; that's the amount of time you need for go to first to second. This one, due to Christmas, is three weeks. So, in order to meet those requirements, we're just going to move everything to the next meeting. Are there any other additions or changes to the agenda that anybody would like? Okay. So I will make a motion to accept, oh, I move to amend the agenda. So with that, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Director Hanke. Are all in favor, any questions? Is any, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. So I will now make a motion to accept the agenda as amended. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Director Hanke. And all in, any questions? All in favor to accept the agenda as amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passed, six-nothing. The next agenda item is the audience opportunity to address the school board. There is one, Mr. Paul Ferguson, I believe. And let me read the guidelines for audience opportunity to address the school board. In the interest of community engagement, the Osseo School Board provides an opportunity for members of the audience to address the board as follows. We'll go through that. The board chair, since there's only one tonight, the board chair will call on each speaker who submitted a speaker card, first calling on those addressing an item included in the current agenda, followed by those addressing topics not on the current agenda. When called upon, please state your name and topic. All remarks should be addressed to the board as a whole, not to any specific member or members, or to any person who is not a member of the board. Please limit your comments to three minutes; longer time may be granted at the discretion of the board chair. During this agenda item, the board administration will listen to comments, ask clarifying questions if needed, and respond when appropriate. The board chair may delegate responsibility to the superintendent or their superintendents designate to follow up with the speaker within a few days following the meeting. Comments and interactions between board members and the public are expected to be respectful, courteous, professional, and civil. The board chair will be responsible for ensuring the interaction meets these standards and will disallow inappropriate interaction. In particular, speakers may not address criticism toward an individual district employee. Such concern should be directed privately to the employee supervisor or higher-level administrator. And personnel concerns should be directed to individuals in the following order: building principal, executive director for HR, assistant superintendent, superintendent, and finally, in writing to the school board. With that, Mr. Ferguson?
Right out of the gate, I might need a couple more minutes than three, if that's okay. I'm the only one here, so if that is acceptable for you.
Well, we'll hear what you have to say.
Okay. My name's Paul Ferguson, and I'm here to talk about the referendum. And I'd like to draw an analogy, and that is, if I came to this building and I offered the front desk $3,000 and said, "Please give this to the teachers," I think everybody here would be okay with that idea. The thing is, though, is that if, with further evaluation, you realize that I put on a burglar's mask, and at gunpoint I held a bank up for $3,000, how would your opinion change? Would you feel differently about me giving $3,000 to the front desk in those circumstances? And so with that analogy, what I'm saying is that all the facts need to be considered when you're talking about the referendum. And that's, that's what I'm here for tonight, is to give you information or facts that maybe you can consider when you take your vote. This is a quote from a United States congressman. "We cannot have a justice system that bases its decisions on anything other than the fact. Respect for the rule of law is a thread that holds the tapestry of this country together, and it depends upon you having confidence in those you empower to enforce the law. And importantly, do not ever accept the notion that victimized or impacted or negatively treated because bias or prejudgment have any burden of proving harm. Bias is intrinsically harmful. It is the making up of your mind based on anything other than the facts. We use a blindfolded woman holding a set of scales to symbolize what we want in our justice system, and there is nothing more antithetical to justice than lowering the blindfold and making up your mind based on who is standing in front of you. We cannot survive with a justice system we cannot trust." My point is, with this quote, is to indicate that there is a lowering of the blindfold when it comes to interpretations about teachers in our education system. Invariably, the scales of bias lean heavily favoring teachers. There's a necessity for the school board to review the facts in detail that impact the taxpayers as well. There, there's a couple of statutes, and it pertains to you directly, 10A.07 and 471.87. And what this has to do with is a conflict of interest. And I would like to point out that the funds that come in from the referendum pay all of you. And so there is a conflict, immediately a conflict of interest in that particular...
That was 30 seconds.
Pardon me?
30 seconds.
Oh, I got a lot more. I got a lot more. Okay. The, okay, well, let's see. There are two separate dichotomous approaches to government actions, whether it's national, state, or local body. One is transparency, and the other polar opposite is being misleading. Both require forethought; both have its rewards. One is symbiotic; the other is destructive. One idea thinks of the future; the other thinks of myopic greed. One side of the dichotomy thinks of the community and long-lasting relationships and growth; the other self-absorbed individualism. Transparency, as it pertains to behavior, implies openness, communication, and accountability. It is a metaphorical extension of the meaning of a transparent, a transparent object as that can be seen through.
Mr. Ferguson, is there something you want us to do tonight or not do?
Yes, I'm, I'm getting there.
Well, last, last year, this went on for 20 minutes, and I respect that, but I do want to go on to additional business. So is there a specific action you have in mind tonight?
Yeah, okay, you want, okay, all right. All right, well, I want you to review the ballot. And in the ballot, there is a section in the ballot that is, when you read it, on the third and fourth line, what it discusses is 1,900 and, hold on, let me get this in front of me here, so I can articulate it more clearly. Okay.
You're referring to a referendum that was passed six years ago, or five years ago.
Yeah, the one that initiated this referendum, sir.
Yeah, November 5, 2013.
November 5, 2013, and I handed you for each individual to look at. Okay, so what it says is, this is to replace the authorization with a new authorization of $1,989.29 per pupil. And so my question to you is, is that "per pupil" synonymous with "per student"?
With that question, I believe we have a difference in pupil units and students, and I will allow Dr. Bauch or whomever to address that, or Patricia. So I think that is something that we can address.
We can address that in your presentation. Good.
Yeah, we'll do that tonight.
Okay. My, my point in, in bringing this particular item up is that when you look at "per pupil", it, it looks as if it means "per student." When a taxpayer reads this ballot and they see $1,989.29 per pupil, it's very easy to interpret this as "per student," and that's, I think that's what a lot of taxpayers would think. And this is what I'm getting at, is the difference between transparency and being misleading. I think that having things listed as "per pupil" is misleading. In the statutes, it's purposefully abbreviated from being adjusted pupil units to "per pupil."
Yeah, this was put to us by, this was approved when this goes to, and this was five years ago, and this was approved language, the all language for referendum is approved at the state level, so this was an issue that you may want to address to the state if you believe that the clarifying language that they use and they allow us to use is inappropriate. You can talk to our council, but there's nothing here tonight that we can do to change legal language that's been approved by the state.
Yeah.
And so I, I do, you know, respect your concern with that, but it's been in law and how it's, it's been followed for quite a long time, and we will address that later this evening.
I totally understand that. I'm not asking you to change the language. All I'm, I'm saying to you is that I want you to be aware that this language is misleading. That's all I'm saying.
Okay. All right, I appreciate it.
Now, the next...
And we would like to move on. There's been plenty of time, and you can address an email to the board if you'd like to.
Well, the vote's happening today, correct?
What's that?
The vote is happening today.
The vote is happening today, yes. On, not on redoing any verbiage in the previous levy, but the, on addressing what the amount of the levy is.
That's exactly my point, sir, and that's what I'm trying to, I'm trying to have the time to address that, but I think I need to have this time. I think that's important.
Oh, I, I believe it is important, but we do have things we have to go through on the agenda. You've well exceeded the timeline that we normally give to somebody to address the board. And I thank you for your time to, in doing that, and if you would have sent us an email with this, we would have been able to read it ahead of time. But, and, you know, you brought up points last year.
Well, I tell you, what, everything that I've listed here talks about where this, this ballot has got a lot of holes in it. And what happened is, when this went to vote, there was a lot of misleading information. One of the things that's not on here is what the total amount is for each year, on what the, what you guys are asking the taxpayer to pay. It's not, it's not on this information. I'll finalize, so you don't have to sit here and listen to me all night. I, I think that as part of your obligation, it's to look at what's the benefit for the taxpayer as well. And there's quite a few things in this ballot that I don't think I've been given the opportunity to say, but, but majority of it is misleading. There, there's quite a bit of verbiage that does not articulate that $50 million is being drawn and that it's to be given as salary for the teachers and the administration. I think it's very indirect. I think the ballot should have said directly, because that's what it's being used for, is that $50 million was to be acquired, and that it was for the use of administration and salaries, and it was not put on that ballot. And I think that's very misleading to the taxpayer.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Item Number Six, which is Truth in Taxation, our hearing and public comments and questions. Patricia?
Good evening, Chair Ostafi, board members, and Superintendent Bauch. On the agenda later this evening is the approval of the levy limitation for taxes payable in 2019. The presentation tonight is designed to inform our taxpayers about the school district budget and the tax levy, in compliance with Minnesota State law, which requires that school districts hold a public meeting on the proposed tax levy with very specific timing requirements. And there's also very specific content requirements for the board presentation. So in order to accomplish all of those requirements in state statute, this is what the hearing agenda will include. We'll have some background information about our 2019 budget, along with actual financial results for fiscal year 2018. And then that will be followed by information on the district's proposed tax levy for taxes payable in 2019. And then at the end of the presentation, we can have an opportunity for public comment and ask questions. So first, I'll provide some background information about public school funding in general. The Minnesota State Constitution includes the duty of the legislature to establish a system of public schools, and the local property tax levy is one of the mechanisms that the state legislature uses to fund public education. So as a result, public school funding is very highly regulated, and revenue formulas, tax policy, and the tax levy process are all established through state law. A key point about the tax levy is that increases or decreases in the local tax levy do not necessarily translate into changes to the school district's budget. State-determined formulas and voter approval create limits on the tax levy. So an increase in school taxes does not always correlate to an increase in expenditures. Now I'll walk a bit through the budget information for fiscal year 2019. And because school districts' fiscal years run from July 1st through June 30th, tonight we'll review this current year's budget, which ends on June 30th, 2019. However, the tax levy we're talking about provides revenues for next year's budget, which begins on July 1st, 2019. The school district budgets within several different funds, all of the funds that we budget within are listed there, and the budget for the majority of K-12 operations lies within that first, but the first fund listed, which is the general fund. This chart, which shows fiscal year 2018, actual year-end results, and then fiscal year 2019 adopted budgets, was published in a local newspaper, according to state law, and it's also been posted on our district website. And I show it here as a way to encompass all of the requirements of the Truth in Taxation hearing, and this required publication is here really for your information only. I'll go into now a little bit of detail about the budget for fiscal year 2019. This first pie chart shows Osseo's area schools projected revenues within all of our funds, and the total budgeted revenue for fiscal year 2019 is over $346 million. You can see the total at the top. I'll provide detail, really just about that blue portion, which is the General Operating Transportation Fund, which makes up about 84.7% of the total budget. And keep in mind that that fund also includes capital expenditures. This chart shows the revenue sources for the General Operating Transportation Fund, so it's that blue portion of the previous chart. These are all the major revenue sources in that fund. This fund, again, it makes up 84, almost 85% of our revenue for the entire school district. Our fund's revenues here come from four main sources. The two biggest are the blue area, which is general state aid, which is that dark blue section, and then special education is that smaller green section. Those two parts of revenue make up about 77% of the total revenue. The other portions, the red section, we're gonna, we'll talk about later, property taxes is about 19.6%, and then federal revenues is that small portion in purple, about 3.7% of the total revenue budget. And if we look at the other side of the ledger at expenditures, we're going to look at expenditures in a couple of different ways. This look shows by major program area, and I'm just going to highlight these portions of the expenditure budget. Most of the expenditures, those that are highlighted, directly support students through either regular or special instruct, special education instruction, vocational instruction, instructional support services, and through transportation. And I'll point out that, that large green portion of other is the capital expenditures area that by law is included. area that by law is included in the general fund. Then if we flip to a different view of expenditures, this chart breaks them down in another way, and we refer to them as an object category. So I want to just show you a couple of areas our taxpayer earlier was referring to. We are a people-intensive business, so about 85% of our general fund budget is spent on salaries and benefits for our staff. This is typical for a public school district. That's what we do, is hire teachers and a lot of staff to support our students. So following the budget, now I'll provide a little information on the proposed tax levy for taxes payable in 2019. So every owner of taxable property pays property taxes for various taxing jurisdictions. There's the county, the city, the township, special taxing districts, and the school district is one of those taxing jurisdictions. Each separate taxing jurisdiction sets its own tax levy, and it's often based on limits within state law. And then Hennepin County, in our case, Hennepin County, sends out the bills, collects taxes from property owners, and then distributes the funds back to the taxing jurisdictions. So this is a sample property tax statement. I think I showed this to the board at the September preliminary levy. It's just a sample, and I just want to point out that folks should be sure to just look at the school district portion when referring to the taxes that are levied here, which is one of the many taxing jurisdictions, or of the several. So here's how school property taxes work. There are 40 different categories that a school district may levy within, and these levy limits for each category are set either through state law, or they're set through voter approval. Those are the only two ways. The Minnesota Department of Education calculates the detailed levy limitations for each school, and we reviewed these limits with the school board at the preliminary levy on September 18th. Then again, we talked about the levy on November 13th and December 11th in two separate work This is a schedule of all the events established to create the property tax levy for taxes payable in 2019. And tonight, we're going through two of them. We're holding this public hearing, and then the board is scheduled to take action, as usual, on the final levy later this evening. So just an overview of our proposed levy. State law requires that we explain the reasons for some major increases in the overall levy. I'm just going to start with overall, the total proposed levy for taxes payable in 2019 is increasing by 7.3% over 2018. So I'll go through some of those details. There's a detailed page included in the action item later tonight, but this is included here, because I want to talk about a few of the line items, and we'll talk about them on separate slides. But I just want to show you what's on this slide. It shows you that there's three funds that we levy for. So first, there's the general fund, which also includes the capital fund for these purposes. There's the community service fund, and then the debt service fund. So for instance, you don't see a food service levy, because tax levy is not one of the revenue sources within food service. And then, okay, the first column of numbers, the non-highlighted column of numbers, shows the tax levy for each line item last year, so for taxes payable in 2018. And then that second column, that's highlighted in yellow, shows the proposed tax levy for taxes payable next year in 2019. And then the final two columns, the third is the difference, the increase or decrease for that individual line item of the levy. And then the final column shows the percentage change by fund, and then in the district as a total. So I'm going to go through several slides that will explain some of the more significant line items. So I'll show you where they are on here first. So we're going to talk about that voter-approved operating referendum that our taxpayer was talking about. That's the one line item of the levy that was on that specific ballot question that he was referring to. It's that voter-approved operating referendum. We're also going to talk about long-term facilities maintenance. It shows up both in the general fund, and then we have some offsetting impact in the debt service fund, as usual and as per our plan. That's how we set that up. We're going to talk a little bit about the lease levy, and then finally, a reduction in debt excess, and I'll explain that a little bit. So first, let's talk about that operating referendum. First, I'm going to just state that students and pupil units are nearly the same thing. Pupil units aren't just a head count, it's within state law. Funding formulas are established to be sure that funding is adequate to cover the costs of students. And so it has been simplified extensively in recent legislative sessions, so there's really only two different pupil unit weighting formulas, for the most part, for K-12 education. K through six students are weighted at a 1.0. So it basically is, one student is one pupil unit. There's different weightings if they aren't with us for the entire school year. So if a student comes in late, you know, starts school late, or joins us later in the school year, they won't create a 1.0 in funding. So basically, they're a 1.0 to become a pupil unit. Seventh through 12th grade students generate a 1.2 weighting in pupil unit, and it's just a way that the funding is set up to make sure that it attempts to arrive at the costs of funding public education. We know that the formulas are woefully behind, which is why we need our taxpayers to pass operating referendums in the majority of school districts in the state. But basically, you can think about it as a student, but there's a little weighting component within these funding formulas. So the voter-approved operating levy is increasing by almost $4 million this year. We talked about this extensively at our last work session. This year, there's a few things happening with the operating levy. Our district's voters approved in 2013 an annual inflationary increase, and that matches an amount that's established through state law, and for this year, it was 2.24% was the increase in the formula. And this line item also includes increases due to our student enrollment growth, and we'll talk about that a little bit later tonight. We've been growing fairly rapidly in the past several years, and the operating referendum will grow, as it is covering more students over time. This formula provides funding for district general operations, and as our taxpayer said, teachers are one of the items that are funded through a general operating referendum. The second item I'll talk about is our general and debt service fund levy for long-term facilities maintenance. We've got a reduction of $845,000 in the general fund, and an increase in the debt service fund for long-term facilities maintenance. And that's, those offsetting amounts were established in our 10-year plan so that we could keep flat over time the tax impact of all of our capital-related levies. So it's just according to our plan that these amounts are established. The next item is lease levy. And so we have an increase of about $1.2 million in the lease levy category, and this is increasing due to estimated bond payments for potential future bonds that we might ask the board to issue at some future date, that nothing has been established yet, to fund potential additions to some of our elementary schools. This levy authority helps us maintain construction as a potential option to resolve some overcapacity conditions at some of our elementary schools. So it allows that possibility, keeping this funding in place. We'll continue to talk about that through our ECMAC work later on in this school year. Another area that's a reduction in the levy is within the debt service fund. This one seems a little, it's a little complicated to explain. I don't think it's that hard to understand, so I'll give it a shot. The debt service fund's levy is linked directly to scheduled principal and interest payments on all of the bonds that are either voter-approved or board-approved. And school districts are required by law to levy at 105% of what we need to fund our principal and interest payments. And the idea is to cover delinquent taxes. So ultimately, if delinquent taxes are less than that additional 5%, an excess in the debt service fund accrues over time, and there's a formula set in state law that requires us to pay that back to taxpayers. It can't be transferred to any other funds to be used for any other purposes, so it goes back to taxpayers on a regular basis. And this year, for taxes payable in 2019, the excess was higher than the excess for last year, so an increasing reduction causes a decrease in that line item of the tax levy. So while changes in the dollar amount of the levy provided through our funding formulas can cause the tax bill for individual property to increase or decrease, there's other factors involved, and we've talked about this quite a bit at work sessions. Changes in the value of an individual property can have an impact on an individual property's taxes, school district taxes, as can a change in the value of the entire school district property make a difference in the valuation, or in the taxes of an individual property. So I'm going to give some, an overview of some of the potential impacts on taxpayers. So these are a series of tables and graphs that are examples of just the school district portion of property taxes, and we're looking at a span of time from 2016 to 2019. So we'll hone in on one specific year, but we'll look at that trend over four years. All of these examples were prepared by our financial advisor, Ellers and Associates. And so what they're based on is an 18.6% increase in property values over four years. And for this last year, we're using a 6.2% increase from 18 to 19. So I'll show you how these are working. It's showing the value of one individual property growing at 6.2% from last year to this year. So I'm going to start with, this is again, there's a lot of numbers on here. I'll show you what I think is perhaps the most important. This chart indicates lots of different property types, like commercial, industrial, and agricultural, and residential. And the changes in school district taxes, and it goes way back to 2016 through 2019. And I just want you to notice at the top, this first chart assumes there are no increases in value over that time, and we know that that's not the case, but just for purposes of this chart, so we can show what happens when a valuation increases. So I've highlighted one item here, a $250,000 home, which is nearly the median value for Osseo area schools. A $250,000 home will experience an increase in taxes of $8 between 2018 and 2019 if their valuation did not increase. So this next chart then includes that increase I was talking about, and all of the individual charts I'm going to show you later assume that a home's value increased by 6.2% from 18 to 19. And on that, in that case, then the blue bar, you can see that this home at $250,000, if it had experienced an increase in value, this proposed levy will increase taxes by $87 for next year. So actual changes in value might be more or less than this for any parcel of property. These amounts are intended to provide a representation of what may have happened to school district property taxes for typical properties. So I'll show you a few slides that can show it visually for you. This first example is the one we talked about. It's a $250,000 residential property. They will experience an $87 increase. So if you look at that first, that first chart there on the left, they are growing from $1,172 for school district taxes in 2018 to $1,259 in 2019, $87 increase. And then if you go, and again, I want to just point out that it's a 6.2% increase in that home's property is what's being assumed.
The property value.
The property value, yes, thank you. Yep, and so in this case, we're talking about a home that grew to a value of $400,000, grew by 6.2% last year to this year. And in this case, the property taxes for school districts are increasing by $138. And again, all of these assume that 6.2% increase in property value to the value that's exhibited there in this last year. Then there's a couple of commercial and industrial properties. This is a million-dollar commercial industrial property, experienced a tax increase of $327 for next year, and again, assuming a 6.2% increase in the valuation of that commercial industrial property. And finally, there's an apartment property with that same 6.2% increase in market value will experience a $358 per year increase in the school district portion of property taxes. So those are some examples. There's more details on that first slide. So our next steps are that the board can accept additional public comments on our proposed levy, and then later this evening, the board will certify the 2019 property tax levy. So at this time, we can take any public comment.
Is there any additional comment? Okay, there's none. Thank you, Patricia.
Yep.
All right, next is agenda item number seven, which is the superintendent's report, and I'll hand it over to Dr. Bauch.
I'll be relatively short and sweet tonight. We're going to focus on points of pride only, and I'm going to turn it over to cabinet members to walk through some points of pride this evening. Who's up first, I suppose Patricia, as I shouldn't walk around.
In the category of dreams, Giovanni Delgado Ortiz, a senior at Park Center Senior High, was featured as a CCX News standout student on December 6th. Gio is a student in the International Baccalaureate Program at Park Center and is in the top 5% of his class. He plans to study medicine at the University of Minnesota next fall. Well-being initiatives at Crestview and Fair Oaks Elementary Schools received a boost this year thanks to a $1,000 game on grants. The grants for Crestview and Fair Oaks were provided through Action for Healthy Kids and funded by Cargill and Saputo, respectively. At Crestview, the grant money allowed physical education teacher Stacy Nelson to purchase pedometers to help students reach their wellness goals.
In the category contributing to community, Cedar Island Elementary students continued their year-long community service efforts by creating bags for cancer patients at Hope Lodge on December 14th. Throughout the day, older and younger Cedar Island students partnered to create 265 bags. This holiday season, 58 families in Osseo area schools who are experiencing homelessness were supported through donations of toys, clothing, and gift cards by employees at our community partner, Boston Scientific. District staff and school board members were on hand to thank Boston Scientific employees and received the donations in early December. On December 6th, Fair Oaks Elementary received a $10,000 donation from Luther Brookdale Honda. Jim Hartson, the company's general manager and a Fair Oaks alumnus, presented the check to Principal Phil Sadler. The money will be used to support students and families in a variety of ways, funding field trips, STEM nights, books for students, and more.
In the category of lifelong learning, the numbers are in, the eighth annual Reading is Fun 5K Run/Walk on August 11th raised $11,000 for media centers throughout Osseo area schools. This money will be used to purchase resources that help students learn every day. In the category of mission-driven employees, Al Nolan, a student management specialist at Park Center Senior High, was featured in a WCCO TV segment earlier this month. As a former star basketball player at the University of Minnesota, Nolan is using the lessons he learned on and off the court to inspire, encourage, and support a group of Park Center sophomores. You can read more points of pride on our website at district279.org.
And no other items to report on tonight, Mr. Chair. So thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Bauch. Our next agenda item are the school board reports. First up is November 28th, 2018, and December 4th, 2018 work sessions. Director Craig, can you please read those?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
School board work sessions held on November 28th and December 4th dealt with the search for a new superintendent. Board members agreed on a process and timeline for the search and hired School Exec Connect to assist with candidate recruitment, screening, and selection process. The position has been posted and interviews are scheduled for mid-February. The interview process will include opportunities for open Q&amp;A sessions with staff, students, and community members. A tentative interview schedule has been posted to the superintendent's search section of district279.org.
Thank you, Director Craig. Thank you, Director Craig. December eleventh, 2018 work session, Director Moskata-Jones, can you please read your report?
Thanks, Chair O'Staphie.
Thank you.
The school board held a work session on December eleventh, 2018. During the first portion of the work session, the school board received a brief update regarding the work of the Enrollment and Capacity Management Advisory Committee. This included information about preliminary enrollment projections for fiscal year 2020. More information will be provided in a presentation at this board meeting, December eighteenth, regular school board meeting. Following that update, the school board learned that the details of the proposed payable 2019 tax levy and the corresponding tax impact for taxes payable in 2019. Staff recommended that the board certify the final levy at the dollar mark amount presented. The school board provided direction to bring forward the payable 2019 tax levy as presented for approval at the December eighteenth regular school board meeting tonight. A truth and taxation hearing has also occurred at this meeting on December eighteenth.
Thank you very much. And Director Burgett, could you give us an update on TIES?
Certainly.
Thank you.
TIES was a joint powers board established back in 1967 that included ISD, ISD 279 Osseo area schools as one of forty-eight owner school districts. TIES provided technology services, including the new EduPoint Synergy Student Information System, e-finance plus HR payroll finance system, the Fee Pay System, Ties Ed Professional Development, and more. Recently, the TIES Collaborative was acquired by Sourcewell Technologies with the exception of the building. Osseo area schools had paid nineteen dollars per student for our share of the remaining TIES obligations, and an additional three dollars per student to fund operations until the building was sold. An investor group has agreed to purchase the building, and the result, after all of this is said and done, is a refund back to Osseo. Good news. The refund consists of multiple components. Six dollars is a, per student is refund for the building sale itself. A dollar thirty-three is from true-up of the financials. This is a return, a partial return of the nineteen-dollar payment the district made in the reorganization and acquisition with Sourcewell. In addition, another dollar of the three dollars paid to finance until the building was sold will also be refunded. So the total could be approximately $170,000. In addition, there may be a refund to our taxpayers next year based on a predicted levy for this calendar year. But when it's all said and done, this is very good news for Osseo and the closure of TIES and all this, and the taxpayers, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. And to clarify, I think the initial thought was we were going to be on the hook for about seventy dollars per student, and now it's come down to about twelve or thirteen?
Yes, it's great news.
Okay, thank you very much. Thanks for your work on that board.
You're welcome.
As a reminder, all school board work sessions are open to the public and are also audio-taped. Members of the public can access audio recordings of work sessions on our district website. And ECHMAC and superintendent's search work sessions are also typically videotaped. Next up is enrollment trends and projections. Patricia Maddison, welcome back.
Good evening. Chair O'Staphie, school board members, and Superintendent Baugh. Tonight's presentation is about enrollment trends and projections. We review trends annually at this time of the year in order to project enrollment for the next fiscal year, and then to make our five-year enrollment projections. So the purpose tonight will be to provide an overview of enrollment trends used in making five-year enrollment projections. And these projections, as you know, are an important part of our decision-making for budget and for staffing for next year. I want to just remind us of our framework, because I wouldn't do a presentation without this framework in front of me. This is the Enrollment and Capacity Management Advisory Committee framework, and enrollment projections are an important part of the work. We spent a lot of time last night at our ECHMAC meeting digging into enrollment projections and the trends that we're using to build the, the projections for the next five years. So just know that this is an important part of the work that is studied by ECHMAC. This chart shows four years of enrollment projections, and then this fall's enrollment for the last five years. So I just want to point out that this fall, our enrollment of 20,758 marks the fourth consecutive year of enrollment growth for Osseo area schools. It's 1.06% over last year, so this fall's enrollment growth rate creates an average rate of 1% growth over, over the past four years. Overall enrollment for fiscal 2019 is greater than 2018 enrollment by 217 students, and that follows an increase of 301 students and 141 students for the last two years. Now, in this line chart, we show Osseo area schools' fall enrollment for the past five years, but we've broken it between the cohorts of elementary and secondary. So on the top, the red line shows students served in secondary grades, and for us, that's grade six through 12. And note that the grades served in this chart were adjusted for consistency to reflect the grade span change, so even though we weren't in that grade span in fiscal 2015, the grade, grade six is included with secondary, and so it's consistent. The blue line on the bottom shows the number of students served in elementary grades K through five. So if you look at our five-year historical trend, it's a key way that we start to measure what our enrollment growth might be in the future. Over the past several years, we have seen enrollment stabilize and grow again. We continue to experience an increase in secondary enrollment, which correlates to the timing of the grade span change. And elementary enrollment stabilized in the last couple of falls, and our, and we had a little bit of a decline due to charter schools, but they're seeming to stabilize again, our enrollment, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. This next chart is a chart of non-resident students, so, so students who are not residents of Osseo area school district but enroll here. Minnesota has an open enrollment options program, often referred to as open enrollment, or it's an enrollment options program. Families can make choices to enroll their students in public schools that are not in the school district in which they reside. Osseo area schools has consistently enrolled about 1,300 students from other Minnesota school districts, and in recent years, this number has reached and surpassed 1,400 students, and it has consistently represented over 6% of our total school district enrollment. The majority of these students come from Anoka, Hennepin, Robbinsdale, Minneapolis, and Brooklyn Center. So this next slide then shows district 279 Osseo area schools' residents that attend other school options. So in addition to students coming into Osseo area schools, like we talked about on the previous slide, school choice means that some of our Osseo area school resident students choose options outside of the district. So I want to just remind us that the fiscal year twenty-nine, day, 2019 data is preliminary, because in that case, it reflects November information, not year-end data, and that information regarding our non-public or private school students is especially early in that estimating. Preliminary data suggests a slight increase in the population of private school students. So if you look, that's that top little bart, part of the bar, and that also includes homeschooled, homeschooled students, and it's an increase of about 29 students to a total of 1,712 in private schools. And then we have the number of students opting out to other public school districts. That appears to be declining in its total, and we'll dig into a little more detail about that. However, the number of students choosing a charter school option appears to continue to grow, and we'll dig into that a little more too in a little bit. The number of resident students opting to attend Osseo area schools has continued to So looking at those families who choose a public school option for their children, we've got 76% of our resident students who attend a public school option are choosing Osseo area schools. So what's not in here are those private school students. So this is, of those families who choose for, for public schools, we capture 76%. We sometimes think of that as our capture rate. So for Osseo area schools in fiscal year 2019, we estimate we are capturing 76.04% of students whose family chooses a public school option for their child. That's up from 75.19% last year. So these next couple of slides will provide a bit more detail about specific public school options families are choosing. This slide contains a list of all of the Minnesota school districts which enroll more than 50 of our Osseo area schools' resident students. Because choice can go both ways, the last three columns show the net gain or loss for Osseo for the last three years. For example, if you subtract the number of Anoka resident students choosing to attend Osseo area schools, that's 439, from the number of Osseo area schools' resident students choosing to attend in Anoka, that's 853, you'll see that we have a net loss of 414 students from Osseo area schools to Anoka. And early data indicates, if you can just see down on these lines, a decline in our net loss of students to Anoka, to Brooklyn Center, to Hopkins, and YZeta. So while we do continue to lose students, that seems to be declining for those, for those districts. Osseo gains more students from than we lose to the Minneapolis Public School District. This next slide then talks about public charter schools, and of course, there's no opt-in and out of a charter school. Families can only choose to go there. They don't, they don't have a, a home district in a charter school. So these again are the list of public charter schools in which 50 or more Osseo area school students attend. So enrollment has grown over time at most of these charter schools. So as schools like Parnassus, which is the one on top, they've added grade levels going up through fiscal year 2016, so some of the growth is simply grade levels that have been added. But the other thing we're noticing is the cohort size at each grade level is growing. So as the, as the charter school becomes more well-known, it's a, a larger cohort size over time. So right now, Parnassus has about 75 to 80 students per grade enrolled from Osseo area schools, but the higher grade levels only had about 20 per grade level. So I would not be surprised if that cohort attending Parnassus didn't grow to 1,000 students, if they continue to capture their grade levels that high. So just to, it's a trend to be watching. And the same is true for the K through eight school, Noble Academy. They have about 60 Osseo area school students per grade in their primary grade, but that cohort size has maintained, and it's moving through all the grade levels. And so I would expect that that number of students attending Noble will grow to about 540. So we, we watch those trends over time as part of our enrollment projections. I believe you saw this at our work session last week, but this is our grade level projections. And so all of this trend information that we see in our grade levels is used to estimate our five-year enrollment projections, and those by grade level are shown in the yellow highlighted columns. And I just want to show you a few things that I think are interesting to point out about these projections. So our overall historical data, again, shows that growth trend in the past few years. And then just up at the top, just as a point of interest, we use our Hennepin County birth data from five years ago to help us predict what our kindergarten class might be five years later. It's a common way for school districts to predict kindergarten. And then I just want to show you in our cohort of K through five students, it had a little bit of a downward trend for the past few years, and we think that that's due to a draw of public charter schools that are coming into the district and then growing over time. And then our secondary cohorts, both at middle and at senior high, are either stable or they're growing over time. And then I just want to show you grade nine enrollment, because that's been an interesting grade to watch. So it's at 1,689 is what we're predicting for next fall, which again is going to be up more than 200 students from that class size when they were eighth graders. So is it, we're seeing that growth bump as, as children move into our senior high schools. So then, as those ninth graders have been growing over time, overall, you can see that that, that cohort of classes is growing into the future. So you're going to see a lot of classes over 1,700 students at the senior high in the coming years. And when I was looking back, it's been since about 2011 or 2012, and we've, we've seen a lot of 1,700s as a cohort in our classes, so that, we've got to be watching that growth, and that's one of the reasons that we are looking at a long-term plan to get some additions onto our high schools within the next five years, because that growth is here. And these are some of the largest classes that we've seen coming through our high school. So you can see that overall, we're predicting that will grow by about 108, 178 students overall next year to 20,913. You can see that number there. It's the first yellow highlighted column. That's our early predictions for next fall. And then I just want to show you that same data, but in these trend lines. So this chart shows the larger grade levels moving through the ninth grade and move, moving their way into the secondary system, look at the growth trend in the future for our secondary enrollment, and it will continue to grow over the next five years. And I just want to say again, we will need some additions on our senior high schools to accommodate this growth. Our elementary enrollment, which is in blue, appears to be stabilizing and growing slightly over the next five years. What you're not seeing here is some growth in housing that we expect to occur in far northwest Maple Grove as Highway 610 is completed. We work very closely with the city of Maple Grove, and we're beginning with ECHMAC to talk about how we might quantify that over time. We expect that that growth could start in earnest, perhaps as early as fiscal year 2022, and they're expecting a build-out over five years. Could be 300 to 700 students. We're working on a lot of different modeling, but we've been on a path of being planful about that, so we have time to react to that. And most of that growth would be in Fernbrook Elementary School, which has capacity available for growth as it begins, but we have to be mindful, because it's likely that we'll want to think about building an elementary school, and we own land for that purpose. And for the same reason, this growth that's getting, getting absorbed into our existing schools is the reason that we're talking about doing some short-term additions onto some of our elementary schools to accommodate the overcrowding that has already occurred in some of our schools. So here's what our next steps are. In the coming weeks, we're going to finalize our grade level and our site-level enrollment projections. We've been talking with principals about their projections and getting their feedback, and these projections will be used to prepare our revenue budgets, our staffing allocations, and then it will inform our facility planning, again, for next year and over the next five years. We're going to continue to monitor housing and economic trends carefully as we examine our data with the Enrollment and Capacity Management Advisory Committee. So that's our presentation about enrollment, and do you have any questions?
Thank you, Patricia. Board members, any questions?
I have a question, actually. I don't know, actually, I was wondering, when we're looking at this, these slides here where you are showing the residents and where they're attending, these and the, the next ones, sorry, the other way. I just had a thought. How are we tracking students who, maybe they start in our district, but they move, but they still go in our school district? Are those students considered open enrolled?
Yeah, we have a process that they can open and roll to stay in the district, so they're allowed to register back, if they want, to register back at the school they left at as an open enrolled student.
So, I mean, we, I know we don't like just, if a kid moves and they're going to the school and the parent is transporting them, we're not kicking them out in the middle of a school year.
They aren't required to leave. They, they may go and register in their new resident district.
But do we, so we make them reregister the following year, or do they just, because my understanding was that they kind of are grandfathered into that school unless the parents elect to take them out and move them?
That's right. They, once they're open enrolled, they are in our district, so that first open enrollment action keeps them in our district. And Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, even in a school with a hard close, we allow families to open enroll- we allow families to open enroll to stay. If a family moves out of the district, they're allowed to open enroll to stay.
To stay at the school that they're already in?
Yes.
So those kids are still tracked through this system as open enrolled?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Director Henke.
Um, so, o- over the years, um, the school district, the school board, we've made decisions, um, we, we closed and repurposed schools. Um, we lost students, now students are coming back. Um, and so as I've come back onto the board, you know, thinking of, of the years past and then coming back onto the board and kind of hearing some of the challenges, um, um, I'm just wondering, a- and I hear ECHMAC is looking further down the line, and I'm just wondering, um, so with, with the students that have chosen not to enroll within Osseo, I, can I ball the twenty-six, twenty-seven hundred? I don't even know that we could serve them in our buildings if they all chose to come back. And so, um, I'm just thinking of, you know, some of this board will continue on, we'll have new board members. Um, h- how, how closely are we looking at building probably at least a new elementary school? Because we, you know, we closed several, um, and now, now we're looking to add on. And so I'm just wondering, you know, to minimize boundary changes, if we do short-term boundary changes to accommodate some of the growth, um, if we realize because of new construction and, and, you know, neighborhoods turning over, um, and I'm in one of those neighborhoods in the Rice Lake area, um, it, it almost, with what I know today, it almost feels like we should be looking at building the new elementary school sooner rather than later to minimize boundary changes, um, because the new board members, I don't know that they realize how many phone calls and emails, um, and how many people will be at these meetings when you start talking about boundary changes. And then if they decide to, to build another elementary school, you know, several years down the line, now you've got another whole set of boundary changes. So just, just kind of planting the notion that, um, maybe we're at that point where the new ma- elementary comes sooner rather than later. So just wanted to, kind of some of my last information that I'll share. So thank you.
Any other questions or comments? So some of the numbers, twenty-seven thousand six seventy-six of our own residents, nineteen thousand seven forty-three choose to come here, seventy-nine hundred and thirty-three, or roughly twenty-nine percent of the total choose to go elsewhere. So, um, and that's seventy-one percent capture rate. If you take out those choosing a non-public education, okay, that goes up to seventy-six percent capture rate. Uh, eight years ago, or seven years ago, twenty-twelve, we were at eighty-one percent. So that's a significant, uh, amount that we've lost in that period of time. And as you said, mainly to charters. Uh, some of that due to decisions to open charters that were based upon decisions that previous boards had made to close and redistrict and repurpose and, you know, change boundaries. So, uh, you know, those schools are seeing their day, they're continuing to grow, and that's a competition that, uh, quite frankly, we brought upon ourselves. So, uh, we do have to be cognizant of parents and what their needs are for their children, and what the children's needs are, uh, when we do make decisions. And I would like to see all of them come back. You know, that's what we're here for. We're, we're the public school system, I would like to see all of them come back. They did it tomorrow, would be in prob-, you know, would be in trouble.
Lot of sleepless nights.
Yeah.
I'd be a lot of sleepless nights.
Yeah. Uh, y- you know, e- e- even, you know, i- i- as, as we're gaining another two hundred a year due to organic growth as well as to, uh, well, we're still losing some. So we're still having additional organic growth coming through our population, you know, that two, three hundred a year. It's causing us some heartburn as it is. So we, we are addressing that. All of these ECHMAC meetings have been going on for the last two years, have been open to the public. Uh, it isn't something new. I, I don't think anyone on this board doesn't understand what, what's facing us, and it is going to be some significant challenges. And, uh, uh, the two members sitting out in the audience tonight who aren't yet up here, uh, are going to have, uh, quite a bit of, uh, interesting conversations with, uh, parents over the next couple of years, and we all will be. But it is something we've tried to be very open and honest and direct about, and, uh, we're continuing to try to do that the best way we can. Thanks for your comments. Dean?
Mr. Chair, can I add one more thing?
Sure thing.
Um, you know, kind of listening to your comments have kind of spurred my thinking. Um, I, I know there's times we view the, the charter schools, the non-public schools as, as, um, maybe a less desire. I, I don't want to put words in people's mouths, but we, we view it as, as, you know, not a good thing for Osseo. I kind of view it as, um, it's good, healthy competition that I believe has really helped Osseo, um, look at the service that we're providing. Not that it wasn't good, but I think it has made us better. Um, it has, it has forced our programs, um, you know, everything that we do, it has really pushed us to excel, um, at what, what we were already doing well. So I view it as healthy competition, um, and that's, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, a- and I agree with you, and I think, uh, bullet number two in our superintendent search criteria is that the superintendent has to understand and acknowledge that we are in a competitive situation, and we do compete, and they, that is something that they have to understand. So that is something that the board has recognized and, and put that forward. So thank you. Thank you, Patricia. Uh, next agenda item is the consent agenda. Uh, and I want to pull up all the specific items here real quickly. Is there, uh, are there any items you would like to remove for separate consideration in any of these? Okay. Uh, hearing none. We will go to the motion. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Director Henke. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, uh, by Director Douglas. Uh, any discussion on the consent agenda? Uh, there are some items on here, uh, that, uh, are talking about our long-term facility management bid awards, and some of them are a couple million dollars or more. There's some substantial pieces on here. And this is based upon, starting three years ago, the approval of the ten-year, two-hundred-and-thirty-five-million-dollar project to, uh, refurbish our investment in our schools, just like people, uh, update their homes. Uh, you know, we have old buildings and we have newer buildings, but I think the, the youngest we have is somewhere around twenty-five, twenty-six years old. So we have a lot of work that we have to do. One of these is, uh, is putting in new air conditioning, you know, new heating systems at schools. Others are putting in new bathrooms, things that we do at our homes all the time, and things that we have to continue to do at our schools. While they may be old, we need to have them up to standards for every child in the district to attend, you know, schools that are safe and healthy, uh, environments. And that's what this continues to do. And I just wanted to point that out, that it may be buried in the consent agenda, uh, but one of them is, uh, you know, working at, at one of our elementaries, and, and others are working in a middle school, and another one is for work at the ICE Arena. So we, we are looking, and again, this is across the district. So I just wanted to point that out and make sure that people understand that, um, you know, we are moving forward and it's a continual basis to, uh, maintain our schools properly, which, uh, uh, is, is needed.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Can I add on to that? And I would just add that, um, we had been doing that maintenance, just maybe not at the, the pace we should have been, so, um, a- and so, um, it, it is good work that it's getting done, um, a- at a much quicker pace. Um, so thank you.
All right. Any other questions or discussions? All right, all in favor of the motion, uh, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion passes six to nothing. Thank you. So the first action item on tonight's agenda is the approval of the twenty-eighteen payable in twenty-nineteen levy limitation certification. Uh, Patricia will give us any, any additional information on that. Uh, so, go ahead, Patricia.
And certify the levy at the amount presented in the materials and reviewed earlier this evening.
Okay. Uh, is there a motion to approve the twenty-eighteen payable twenty-nineteen levy limitation certification, uh, as suggested, uh, by administration and as presented here this evening? Is there a motion to approve?
Yes, I move to approve.
Okay, uh, a, a, a motion made by Director Brigette. Is there a second?
I second.
Second by Director Muscata Jones. Uh, is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Director Henke.
Um, so I, I know the piece that I had asked a couple of weeks ago, um, it's related to the excess operating levy that was passed five years ago. Um, and so just a little, just a little background on the excess operating levies, um, the, i- it's been a discussion that the board has had kind of over the years. But since we had a, a community member here, taxpayer raised a question. Um, so I, what I wanted to share is, um, within the state of Minnesota, the constitution, um, and as Patricia had noted, Article thirteen, the miscellaneous subjects, section one is a uniform system of public schools, and it's the state legislature shall make such provisions, um, by taxation or otherwise, as well as secure a thorough and efficient system of public schools. Um, so, so that is within their constitution. Um, then they also within statute have, have allowed school districts to levy, um, excess operating dollars. Um, and, and it kind of falls in within our general education revenue. Um, now in our most recent levy, we, um, and I don't know if the state, I think the state changed it where we can now add inflationary language into the levy. Um, so now it's the voter-approved levy with the language that we can do inflationary increases on that levy, um, which, which passed in the last one. Um, and so the piece that I'm most interested in due to our financial position is the, um, the requesting of the inflationary, um, increase. And, um, in twenty-seventeen, um, we finished with a, well, let me just back up a second. Um, so school board policy seven-thirty is our fund balance policy. And in section five, it talks about our minimum fund balance. Um, and kind of into the middle of it, it says, "The board will endeavor to maintain an unassigned fund balance that will not fall below five percent of the district's general fund operating expenditure budget." Um, in twenty-seventeen, um, we added about eight hundred and seven thousand dollars to the fund balance, bringing us to sixty-six thousand four seventy-one, sixty-six million four seventy-one, or twenty-nine point five percent. This past year, um, revenue less expense, we were favorable by four million dollars, bringing our fund balance to just over seventy million five hundred thousand, or thirty-point seven-three percent. Um, and so if we're striving to maintain five percent, and we've grown it to be just shy of thirty-one percent, my, my view would be that, um, we've got the sufficient dollars in our fund balance to operate. We do not need an additional one-point-four million in inflationary increase in the levy. Um, I, I view it as you ask for the dollars when you need the dollars, and when you are okay with the dollars, then you don't have to ask for the levy, uh, the inflationary increase. Um, and so my, my point would be, since it's kind of all rolled into the maximum levy, um, based upon what I had just stated, I will not be able to support a maximum levy for, um, this particular round. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Director Craig.
Um, I'd also like to express, uh, my concern over the seven-point-three percent. Um, it's, my concern is not with how the money is managed, it's not with where the money is going to. I think we're doing wonderful work here in Osseo area schools. I just feel like it's a very high, um, tax rate this time around. I don't know how long, how sustainable that will be over time. Um, I do attribute some of it to the aggressive LTFM plan, which I wasn't initially in support of, although I do appreciate the work that we are doing and we are investing in our infrastructure. So, um, to sum it up quickly, I'm not going to support the levy tonight.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I wanted to point out a couple of things. I believe on a typical house, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, um, that was around fourteen-hundred in taxes. I'm, I'm having trouble finding that, but that same increase is eight dollars. Uh, so it's well under a one percent increase when you look at it in the total. Yes, the, the amount, the levy's going up, but it is spread over thousands and thousands of properties.
That's assuming no, that's assuming no, um-
Right, right, on a, so on a same rate, same house that hasn't changed, uh, it's going up eight dollars.
But if you look further down the list and you look at, get into higher-value homes, you're looking at a significant increase from year, over year.
Yeah, so if it's a five-hundred-thousand-dollar house, it's going to be, which is about ten percent of the district, uh, it's going to be a sixteen-dollar increase. If you look at the, uh, numbers of a home in that price range, a lot of them have moved because of all the new construction in the last couple of years. You've seen a lot of movement in the, in the, the lower, uh, priced homes in the two-hundred to three-hundred range. And, you know, uh, over the last couple of years, a lot of those home values have risen. And so that eight dollars isn't eight dollars, it was probably more fifty or, or a hundred. But that is, uh, a reflection of what's happening with the home market and not our tax rates. Uh, are, a- as you can see also from the tax rates, from sixteen to nineteen, it's actually still a net decrease from twenty-sixteen, uh, on, on a same, uh, house, and a very small increase. So, yes, there's, there's, uh, we're asking for a levy increase here, uh, that's built in and approved by the voters, uh, that, you know, the language is clear. Uh, the legislator approved that, and that did, you know, that helps from having to go back every five years for a levy instead of ten, like we're doing today. Uh, and it also allows us to push back any, uh, cuts in our budget. Uh, quite honestly, if you looked at, you know, i- i- when you look at the numbers, uh, I think we're now, you know, predicting cuts in, having the cut in three years, or four, or fives. But those cuts are always out there dependent upon what's happened financially. And we have a new governor and we have new legislature. Uh, I'm not sure what's going to happen there. You know, there's going to be, uh, differing priorities. Uh, you know, the, the former governor's a, a teacher, so the, I'm sure there's some priorities there. But again, we don't know what's going to happen. Uh, we are about to look at expanding schools because we continue to expand our, uh, uh, our student population. Uh, and over the next couple of years, if we do build out additional classrooms, if we do build on, we're going to have to staff those, uh, rooms. Uh, and, you know, taking away the flexibility now in the face of, uh, those increases in student population, the, the knowledge or, or lack of knowledge on clarity of what's going to happen with the legislature over the next couple of years, um, it's probably, you know, in my opinion, it's not the right time to make that cut. Uh, when things become more stable, when our needs become more clear, then we can take a look at that. But I, I don't know that now is the right time to, to make those cuts. Uh, they're not insignificant, a million four is not minimal, but, you know, it, it is a fairly small amount, but it is an amount that helps, you know, will continue to help us drive flexibility. And that's my opinion, so I, I just wanted to address some of the concerns that were shown. Anyone else? Director Brigette?
Yeah, I'd also like, um, I agree, this is money that, this is a- the cost of living increase was approved by the voters, and you can't get more direct than that, in my opinion. Um, for us to say, uh, to reject that, and then the voters could say something like, well, you know, you could have bought down class sizes, or you could have put that money toward achievement, or you could have, you know, applied it to more teachers, or one of these other things to move the achievement needle. Um, I think it's, uh, it's inadvisable to, um, we've been approved to do this. I think if you find that you don't need the money, you can return it in a future year, that is true, you can do that. Um, but I, I'll, I appreciate having the flexibility going forward, the way this is, uh, structured, that lets the next board make decisions, uh, to support the plans of the district going forward. So I'm in favor of it.
Thank you, Director Brigette.
Chair Ostaffy.
Yes, Director Muscata Jones.
Um, just to be clear, um, the fund balance that we have currently of twenty-nine point- Just to be clear, the fund balance that we have currently of 29.54 or 30.73% in our predictions for our projected fund balances, if we didn't keep this in, that we would be at a seriously low fund balance. And then, we would have to be, start making cuts. So, I would approve the inflationary increase to make sure that we have enough for the future.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yep, Director Douglas.
Thank you. I, both Dean and Jessica, I really appreciate your opinion and respect it. And I hear you on that, especially being in a home whose value increased. So, my tax increase is not going to be $8. It's going to be a lot more. So, I definitely understand where you're coming from and respect that. However, when we have situations like the administration coming to us and asking for $400,000 all of a sudden, because we need more teachers right now to staff a school, and we know that we're projected to have more students coming, and we don't have the space. And we've had situations already this year where we've had really large class sizes that we weren't necessarily anticipating or expecting until kind of the last minute. I like the notion of having the flexibility, but being able to return the funds if they're not needed. But I would hate to see what would happen to our school district, to the students and the staff, and the families that live here, if they don't have that security of flexibility to small, make smaller class sizes in the future. So, I will be supporting this.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Director Hank.
You know, I just, so just a couple of points. If we have more students and we add on, those are capital dollars. Those are totally separate than operating, you know, general, general fund operating dollars. More students brings in more revenue. Capital builds the bricks and mortars. New students coming in brings in additional revenue. I've only seen once in my years on the board that we've actually not done a maximum levy, and it was in a situation probably similar to this. We've got the fund balance. Language aside, whether it's a dollar a year, $100 a year, $1,000 a year, the fact is, when I look at the numbers, and that's why we've done the budget to the extent that we have, we came in favorable to budget. So, what that tells me is that if there were additional things we wanted to pursue, if it was additional staff in the buildings, if it was additional, whatever it may have been, curriculum, we would have purchased that, but we didn't. And so, we were $4 million favorable. And to accept less of an increase is not a cut. It is still going up by market value, by students. So, not taking the inflation is not, we're not cutting anything. We're just not taking everything that we can take. And so, I would, you know, like I said, I know I don't have the support to peel off that piece. But I just want us to be mindful that $10 for me may be very different $10 for somebody else. And so, to me, it's kind of more of the principle, you ask for the money when you need it, and when you don't need it, you don't ask for it. It builds trust. It creates, yeah, it just creates that relationship of trust. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right.
May I?
Yeah, oh yeah, sure. I wasn't sure what that meant.
You were looking right at me.
I wasn't sure if that was like, "Hold on," or "You want to talk?" So, Director Bauk?
You know, I apologize for being redundant here. First comment, let's be thankful we're in the position we can even have the discussion, okay? There are districts that are on the other side of the coin and may not be as fortunate as we have been in the last couple of rounds of levy referendum votes. The second thing, I can't disagree with you, Dean, on performance. Our administrative staff and our teachers in the district here over recent years have performed a budget, you know, expenditure to revenue very, very well. Again, I'm very thankful that they've been able to do that. I think underneath board guidelines, though, or board protocols or whatever from a year ago, instead of spending down the additional dollars that we received that you just noted, Dean, it was to, you know, bring it to the reserve and keep the reserve in a building fashion. Because as Jackie had said, our plan all along, when this levy, my understanding was passed, was to build the fund balance, not go back to the public, and then spend it down over the course of that, that 10 years. I've never met a board member who wants to raise taxes, whether you're for the certified levy tonight or you vote against it. I know all of you sitting here, if you're like the other 24 years of me working with board members, no one enjoyed voting yes for a tax increase, okay? And it's just inherent in who we are. But what's also inherent in who you are is, I think a lot of Minnesotans have fiscal, are fiscal conservatives, but they're also have social agenda to make sure we're doing good things, and in this case, for students and our families and our community. I would also echo what Mike said about the precariousness of state funding. I've lived through the highs and lows of that. I've watched a 15% fund balance disappear in 24 months. I've watched governors delay aid payments and school districts having to go out and borrow money. At least we forget, again, this is what you paid for when you bought this older, experienced person. What was the word, Dean?
Tenure.
Tenure.
Wisdom.
Wisdom. Even though we have, Mike said something about Governor-elect Walz and maybe what his agenda is, the best increase we had while I was superintendent was with Governor Palenti during very tough times, okay? And so, that, that ability of that state funding, it's just a, it's a slippery slope is what my experience has been. And you will be in a little different position after this, because we have a funding year coming up. It's a biennial funding year. You might want to look at it very differently a year from now. And I get that. And I, and I could probably go through a couple of other points, but I'll probably just stop there and say that we wouldn't have made the recommendation unless we thought it was based on some good rationale. We also understand that board members will have different rationale for basing your vote tonight. And we fully accept that, and we'll work with whatever the vote is tonight. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Dr. Bauk. With that, I would say that we take the vote in to approve the 2018 payable levy limitation certification as presented by staff. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Motion passes 4 to 2. Thank you very much. Next, the second action item is the recommendation for approval on the terms and conditions of employment between ISD 279 School Board and our equity staff. Laurel Anderson will provide us the information.
And I'm actually going to speak to B and C, both contracts.
Okay.
Good evening, Chair Ostaffy, School Board members, and Superintendent Bauk. On the agenda this evening for School Board Action, our recommendations for approval for two employee groups comprised of equity staff and RN LPN employees. The contracts you'll be considering this evening include approximately 66 employees who serve in essential frontline and support positions throughout the district. All of these agreements expired on June 30, 2018, and the new agreements contain language changes that reflect current district practices as well as additional provisions that serve to support our district mission and strategic priorities. School Board members have had the opportunity to review the proposed changes to the provisions contained in the terms and conditions, to ask questions, dialogue about new provisions, and to consider financial implications. The new contract provisions fall within the financial parameters set by the board for the 2018-2020 contract term. It's the superintendent and my recommendation that you approve the employee contracts presented to you this evening. Thank you.
Okay. So, thank you, Laurel. With that, is there, we're going to do two motions. Is there a motion to approve the recommendation for approval agreement on the terms and conditions of employment between the Independent School District 279 School Board and Equity Staff, July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2020?
So moved.
So moved by Director Douglas. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Second by Director Burgett. Is there any discussion? Like I said, we have had ample opportunity in closed session to discuss a lot of this. That's what that's for. And, you know, I would like to say that we are working very closely. I appreciate the work that both sides, both teams bring into this. We are doing good work in bringing together certain language that benefits the district as well as benefits all of our groups. So, I do want to appreciate that or say thank you for doing that. Any other discussion? All in favor of approving the contracts, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes 6 to nothing. Next action items, the recommendation for approval on terms and conditions of employment between the ISD 279 School Board and registered nurses and licensed practical nurses, July 1, 2018, June 30, 2020. Is there, is there a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Director Moscata Jones. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Director Douglas. Is there any discussion on this contract with our nurses? Okay, all in favor of approving the contract, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes 6 to nothing. Thank you. And we took out the policy readings because of the timing issue. Gifts to the district. Final action item is recommendation to accept gifts to the district totaling $94,658.43. Is there a motion to accept the gifts to the district of almost $95,000?
So moved.
Moved by Director Douglas. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Director Hank. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just wanted to say thank you. The gifts are very much appreciated and always, always a joy to receive.
I wanted to point out a couple in here. They're listed online, and I would suggest that everybody go online to look at the community members, our churches, our PTOs, individuals, and other organizations who are donating money to schools across the district. Passion Church, which is in one of our buildings, helps out with lunch accounts. Advent Lutheran Church helps our homeless youth. PTOs have stepped up dramatically across the district. Solos Pizza donated 1,700 for kindergarten and classroom support. There are many other ones. Wells Fargo, Lions, Lions have been very generous. I don't want to miss Twin City Orthopedics, a $10,000 donation. So, again, these are members of the community, organizations in the community, the Booster Clubs. And I wanted to say thank you to all of them who donate this month. And there's been others, other months. And there's a lot that goes on in this community, and I wanted to thank everybody. So, with that, all in favor of accepting, graciously accepting those donations, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes 6 to nothing. Onto informational items. Mr. Palmetier will share information with us in regards to the first reading of Policy 452 Conceal and Carry Restrictions, Policy 921, Use of Tobacco on School Premises, and Policy 926 Conceal and Carry on School Premises. So, that, Mr. Palmetier?
Thank you, Chair Ostaffy, School Board members, and Superintendent Bauk. As Chair Ostaffy just indicated, there are three policies on the agenda for first reading tonight, Policies 452, 921, and 926. All of these policies were recommended for first reading tonight by the School Board Policy Committee. The first policy recommended for first reading tonight is Policy 452 Conceal and Carry for Employees. The current version of this policy was last revised in 2003. The proposed amendments to this policy maintain the mandates of the current policy. The only recommended changes are a revision of the title of the policy and to more accurately reflect the purpose of the policy, and formatting changes to align with our current formatting standards. I will take all the policies at that time if you allow.
Okay.
The next revised policy set for first reading tonight is Policy 921, Non-Use of Tobacco on School Property. This policy was last adopted in 2001. This proposed policy has been rewritten to clarify the prohibition against any use of tobacco on school property, and this is consistent with Minnesota law. Also consistent with more recent changes to Minnesota law, the rewritten policy prohibits use of e-cigarettes on school property. The proposed revised policy further includes certain recognized exceptions that are also consistent with state law that allow certain exceptions to the use of tobacco, such as use of tobacco products in certain adult Native American ceremonies, or where the product in question is being used as a tobacco secession product. And finally, the proposed revisions to this policy include a title and formatting changes to align with current formatting standards. And lastly, the final policy on for first reading tonight is Policy 926 Conceal and Carry on School Premises. This policy was last adopted in 2003. The proposed policy has been rewritten to align with current state law, which specifically is 609.66 subdivision 1D, which more broadly prohibits the possession of dangerous weapons on school property, including weapons in addition to firearms. In addition, the proposed policy lists specific exceptions to the prohibition against dangerous weapons that reflect exceptions specifically stated under Minnesota statute. The revised policy also includes a reasonable prohibition against possession of look-alike weapons on school property based upon the threat that such items can pose. And finally, the proposed policy includes a title change and formatting changes to align with our current formatting standards. First reading begins a four-week period of reaction to proposed policy changes by concerned groups or individual, individuals. After the four-week period, the School Board may adopt, repeal, or amend the policy after a second reading. The proposed policies are available on the school district website with the agenda for this meeting. Comments on the policies discussed here tonight may be directed to the School Board or to myself. Comments on this policy or policies may also be provided online from the School Board Policy and Procedures webpage, which is located on the school district website.
Thank you. Tim?
Thanks.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Palmetier? And to be clear, some of it is language changes that are in law, and some of it's language changes to clarify that there is no conceal and carry policy in the state. There's a carry policy. We've moved that to firearms to make it very specific, as well as then changing it to align with the Dangerous Weapons statute that have been added along to firearms carry within a school building. So, we are somewhat expanding it. There's no drastic changes other than some of the titles and some of the state statutes that have already been pre-approved. So, with that, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our last agenda item, oh, so the full schedule of board meetings is available on the district website, district279.org. And members of tonight's audience and those watching at home can view a list of the upcoming meetings on the boardroom monitor. This is our final meeting for this year. I do believe the next meeting is, when, the 8th, which is our reorganization meeting, first meeting of the year. And with that, we'll be seeing everybody at the beginning of the new year. So, everyone have a great holiday, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and a wonderful winter break, so that our teachers can spend it away from our children and that we can spend it with our children. So, with that, our last agenda item is adjournment. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Since this will probably be one of our last official actions, unless anybody wants to call a special meeting prior to January 8, I would move to adjourn.
All right. I'd like to second that motion.
And we have a motion and a second. And all in favor of closing a chapter on two great board members and moving into the new year, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes, and we are adjourned. And thank you very much, Dylan.